I'd like to call the Monday, November 5, 2018 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mr. Epley.
Here.
And may I have a report of our minutes of our October 1st regular session, work session, and executive session, and our October 22 executive session. Mrs. Hilton.
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all four of those meetings, and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. We have several special guests here this evening. We have our entire planning commission for the city of Oakwood is here. We have Andy Ide, and Harrison Gowdy, and Healy Jackson. Can you raise your hands and be acknowledged by folks? As well as Vice Mayor Byington serves as the council representative to the planning commission. And they are here to recognize our Chair of the Planning Commission, who is retiring, Jeff Shulman. Jeff is, can you raise your hands where everyone can see you? Jeff is here with his wife, Celia. And Jeff's a forty-two-year resident of the city of Oakwood, and he has decided to move to Kettering. It was funny, because I heard that the mayor, or not the mayor, the governor of Maine, his term expires this year, and he said in the news today that he's moving to Florida because they don't have a state income tax. But anyway, Jeff served our city in several significant voluntary leadership roles. From 1982 through 1986, Jeff was a member of the Oakwood Youth Commission and served as its chairman for two years. And in December 1999, Jeff was appointed by city council to the Oakwood Planning Commission and served as chairman for the past ten years. As a nineteen-year member of the Planning Commission, Mr. Shulman played a major role in many significant Oakwood zoning and land use issues. As chairman over the last ten years, he has presided over the commission meetings and led the commission through several challenging land use applications and several very long and contentious meetings. In exchange for a salary of zero, correct? In his capacity as a member of the Planning Commission, Jeff was also actively involved in development of the 2004 update of the city's comprehensive plan and the 2010 Oakwood Athletics and Recreation Master Plan. And Jeff was recognized by the Oakwood Rotary Club in 2012 when he received the Civic Leadership Award. He's been a tireless volunteer for many years, and epitomizes what it means to give back to the community in a meaningful way. And Jeff, we congratulate you for your service and look forward to visiting you in Kettering. Would you like to come down and say a few words for the folks at home? Normally, when you would have your meetings, you would sit right here during the Planning Commission meeting. So, please come down and say a few words for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I've thoroughly enjoyed my years on the Planning Commission. I've found them challenging, and at times entertaining. And I had a lot of very good support by our members, including Steve Byington and Haley. And, why can't I come up with the name right now? But they're here tonight, and I recognize them. I've always felt that a citizen has a duty if he has a chance to give back to his community. And that's what all of you up here are doing right now. And we, on the commission, we've had some challenges. One was the development of Point Oakwood, which came before us a number of times. And I think as time goes on, it's going to be something in our community that we're proud of. It seems like it's taken an awful long time, but we've got to remember that it started at the time of a real recession, and it was hard for them to get their funding, and it was hard for people to afford to buy a house. But I think it's going to be a lovely development. At any rate, I'm honored to have served, and thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you, Jeff. I know, I speak on behalf of all of city council and city staff. We appreciate all of your efforts over the last nineteen years and beyond. Anybody have anything else wish to add? All right. We do have a replacement for Jeff that we want to appoint tonight. Greg Lotterbach is a, he has his own architectural firm called Greg Lotterbach LLC. Greg graduated from Oakwood High School in 1985. He graduated from the University of Michigan in 1989 with a bachelor's in economics. He then went to Indiana University in 1993 to get an MBA. And then he went to the University of Illinois in Chicago in 2002 with a master's of architecture. So Greg has currently served on our Board of Zoning Appeals, and so he has a lot of experience with our Oakwood zoning laws and codes. So we think he will be a good addition to the Planning Commission. And then replacing Greg on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have Nick Ensley, who works at the same law firm that Mr. Shulman works at. He's an attorney with Siebley, Schillato, and Dyer. And Nick graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison in 2006 with a bachelor's of art in political science and history, and then from the University of Cincinnati College of Law in 2010. And Nick also serves on our Budget Review Committee, representing one of our seven voting precincts. So I would make a motion to council that we appoint Greg Lotterbach to the Planning Commission and Nick Ensley to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it is so ordered. I have one other status report at this time before we get to the visitors section. Yesterday, the Dayton Daily News published an article regarding our housing pre-sale and inspection program. The article stated, "The lead plaintiff, Jason Thompson, was threatened with jail time if he transferred property he owned without first paying for and completing the pre-sale inspection." My question for the city manager is, did you, as city manager, threaten Mr. Thompson with jail time?
Absolutely not, Your Honor.
Did our law director, Mr. Jacks, threaten Mr. Thompson with jail time?
No, Your Honor, did not.
Did our code enforcement officer, Mr. Kroger, threaten Mr. Thompson with jail time?
No, Your Honor, he did not.
Did our former code enforcement officer, Mr. Bunting, ever threaten an Oakwood homeowner with jail time?
No.
Has anyone employed by the city of Oakwood ever threatened an Oakwood homeowner with jail time if they did not comply with our pre-sale and inspection program?
No, they did not.
Is my understanding correct, our pre-sale inspection program has been in existence since 1968, and the missing language addressed in Judge Rose's ruling was inadvertently admitted when the city hired an outside consultant to recodify our city ordinances in 1992?
That's correct.
And again, for the record, did the city of Oakwood ever implement our ordinance in an unconstitutional manner?
No, we did not.
And when the defect in the language of our ordinance was discovered in May 2016, did this city council amend our ordinance in July 2016 to correct this defect?
You did.
Did Judge Rose grant Oakwood permission to implement our amended ordinance, noting that it cured the unconstitutional provision?
He did.
The Dayton Daily News article also noted that residents wonder why the program is still up and running, and quotes property manager Mike Self and attorney Kristen Rosen. My research indicates Ms. Rosen is an attorney in Columbus, Ohio. Do you know if Mr. Self or Ms. Rosen reside in Oakwood?
I do not.
Have you heard from any Oakwood residents questioning the legality or the necessity of our pre-sale inspection program?
I never have, no.
Finally, it's my understanding, if is my understanding correct, that our pre-sale inspection program, along with our outstanding schools and communities and outstanding city services, account for our property values increasing at a faster rate than anywhere in Montgomery County?
I believe it does.
Thank you for clarifying this matter for Oakwood City Council and the citizens of Oakwood. Mr. Baker is a good journalist and has done outstanding job covering the city of Oakwood. This article, however, was not his best work. I'll have additional comments about this issue during the legislative portion of our meeting. Thank you for indulging me. We're now for the fun part. It is time to recognize our scarecrow row contest winners, and I will come down and present those with the help, I think, of Carol Collins in Kip. I also want to thank Vice Mayor Byington for assisting with the judging of the scarecrows, because I was unavailable that day. So we have our third place winner. I'm going to have to put these glasses on. Which one is first, second, third? Thank you. And our third place winner is the lazy bear crow. And it is presented to Laura Walters for the lazy bear crow. Is Laura here? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Laura, this is also yours. There you go. You're welcome. Our second place winner is Pablo Picasso Row. Does that sound, did I do that right? Pablo Picasso Row, and that is by Pamela Penchoff for Pablo Picasso Row. Is she here as our second place winner? She is not, so we will make sure that we get this to her along with this lovely gift And our first place winner, and this one was really cool, Brainiac. And that was by the Whitmer family for Brainiac. Congratulations. And you get this big one. And then the mayor's award was Field of Dreams by the Oakwood Junior High and High School Softball for Field of Dreams. Are any of those folks here tonight? They should be in school, right? They should be studying. Okay. Well, we'll make sure we get that to them, and thank you very much. So next on our agenda, my, next on our agenda is the 2018 beautification award winners. I think we're going to show a video, and then we'll pass out the awards after the video. All right. This is the best time of the year, so enjoy.
I think you should give yourself a hand. So I will now come down and we will pass out the awards to all of our great winners. You look at all those different styles of houses and how gorgeous they all were, it's clearly the reason why we're the premier residential community in the Miami Valley. It just goes without saying. So congratulations to all of you. The other thing I noticed, I didn't see one political sign on their people's yards. All right. These are the folks that are here? Or, oh, we don't know that. So we have Aram and Shasta Beam, 235 Ridgewood Avenue. Karen Carter, 2406 Shorey Road. Congratulations Karen. Brian and Sarah Cox, 101 Foyer Boulevard. Are they there? All right, we'll make sure we get this to them. Thanks Kip. Judy DeFranco, 73 East Dixon Avenue. There's Judy, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Amy and Tim Duvic, 131 Rubicon Road. Congratulations. Oh wait a minute, come here, we want to go take a picture here. Margaret Jurgens, 401 Lonsdale Avenue. I can come to you. Nancy Kussman, 2408 Hillview Avenue. Congratulations Nancy. Bob and Laura Peterson, 2626 Delane Avenue. Congratulations. Wesley and Kate Pipinger, 328 Monterey Avenue. Congratulations. Michael and Cassandra Rice, 1502 East Shance Avenue. Congratulations. Becky and Bob Ross, 26 Patterson Road. Did you do all that yourself? You planted every flower?
Not really.
Not really, okay. St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 33 West Dixon. Congratulations. There had to be a committee, correct? Michael and Christina Smith, 816 Acorn Drive. They are not here, we'll make sure we get their award to them. David Stackhouse, 51 West Foyer Road. Congratulations sir. James and Ellen Vaughn, 1711 Southwood Lane West. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Good to see you. And the Wilson family, 324 East Peach Orchard Avenue.
I'm neighbor.
You're the neighbor, accepting the award? Is there anyone here that we didn't have on the list? We have a few others that will receive award, but everyone that's here that's looking for award received an award, correct? All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming too, we appreciate it.
I have no interest in it.
All right, well, this is now, we'll now, oh, well, I guess, let me choose, is there anyone left that still wants to address us as a visitor? This would be your time, but since most of everyone is now leaving to get home before it gets really dark, we will move on to legislation. And Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance he would like to introduce.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a ordinance to amend existing Section 17-800.3, which is supplementation of information filed with county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5323 of the Oakwood Property Maintenance Code to expand and clarify requirements for tenant information forms. That's a very long title for some very simple stuff. This is a housekeeping ordinance to clarify what information must be provided to the city on a tenant information form and the timeframe for submitting that form. Under our Property Maintenance Code, Oakwood landlords are required to provide a tenant information form to the city each time there is a change of tenant at the property. The forms are used for multiple purposes, including maintaining a list of properties that are non-owner occupied, ensuring that properties are occupied in compliance with the zoning code, ensuring that the tax department is aware of those residing in Oakwood who may have filing or other tax obligations, and for providing local contact information that can be useful when addressing code enforcement and/or public safety issues. Tonight's ordinance was written to clarify the four pieces of information needed to accomplish these purposes, which are as follows: the name of each tenant, the relationship of the tenant to each other, the date that occupancy has commenced, and an emergency contact telephone number. It also amends the ordinance to require that that form be submitted within 15 days after a change of tenancy. This is a first reading of this ordinance, so at this time I make no motion.
Thank you very much. We will approve this at our next meeting in December, correct?
Correct.
All right. And then you also have an ordinance to amend our 2018 appropriations.
Yes, this is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2018 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4850 and Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance 4861. This is a supplemental appropriation ordinance to authorize the settlement of litigation involving the city's pre-sale inspection program. It provides for the refund of the inspection fees to a class of 1,055 members, as well as the payment of attorney's fees. It should be noted that the city's liability in this case is due to an oversight that occurred in 1992, when the city hired an outside consultant to recodify its city ordinances. That recodification resulted in an inadvertent omission of search warrant language from the pre-sale inspection ordinance, which went unnoticed until May of 2016. Council adopted an ordinance to cure this defect in July of 2016, and the city's inspection program continues to be an important tool to ensure that Oakwood remains the premier residential community of the Miami Valley. The supplemental appropriation will transfer $72,780 from the general fund to the health fund for the refund of inspection fees, and appropriates $223,179 from the general fund to affect the balance of that settlement, which is primarily attorney's fees, and don't get me started on that part. So I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does council have any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington at this time? I had one issue, when I read the list of the folks that, you know, had inspections during this period of time, it sort of read like a who's who of Oakwood, because, you know, there are a lot of people that live in Oakwood that will buy a house on Clarana, and then they move to Dixon, and then they move farther north or farther west. And one of the things in the agreement that we did with the plaintiffs is when we submit a letter to you saying you're entitled to a $60 refund, you can choose to cash that $60 check, or you could choose to direct the city to send that money to the Dayton Foundation, to the Carlton Smith Gardens, Carlton Jeanette Smith Gardens Fund. And I would encourage any resident that chooses to have that choice, if they want to give that to keep our community ambiance to where it has always been, and if they choose to take the money and cash it, I would encourage them to spend it in the Oakwood Business District during the holiday season coming up. And I believe that is probably the only other point that I have. Is there anything else that council or our lawyer needs to address, or not?
I do want to just, if I could back you up, Vice Mayor Byington, just to ensure that we have read it by complete title tonight.
Ah.
I know it's a long one, and I think we got shorthanded.
Okay. I will read the complete title. It is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2018 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4850 and Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance Number 4861, to provide for the appropriation of an additional amount of $223,179 to be expended from the general fund to pay costs relating to the settlement of litigation, and an amount of $72,780 to be transferred from the general fund to the health fund for the city of, or, yeah, for the city of Oakwood, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018.
All right, thank you. I believe our original second is still applicable.
The original second is still applicable, yes.
And having no other comments or questions for Vice Mayor Byington, would you please call the role Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That concludes our legislation tonight. We do have a staff report from our Director of Leisure Services, Carol Collins. Welcome Carol.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan, and members of Oakwood City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and give you an update on the Leisure Services Department. First thing I'd like to do is I'd just like to share a few things about Gardner Memorial Pool. We had 449 family memberships, 128 single memberships, and 84 senior memberships. The family memberships were down slightly, but the single memberships were up, and then the seniors were down by one from the 2017 season. There were 21,494 visits in 2008 as compared to 19,526 in 2017, and this partially was due to the warmer weather that we had this year. Gate revenue was $7,519 as compared to $7,798 in 2017. The concession stand sales were almost the same in 2018 and 2017 at approximately $19,500. We had 176 participants in swim lessons. We had a winning year for the swim team and had 221 participants, and deep aerobic, steep water workout had 39 participants. The 10th Annual Dog Splash was held a week after the pool closed. We had 39 dogs that came and swam at Gardner Pool on September the 9th, from 1 to 3. It's always a fun event, and they always have a ball.
Are dogs allowed in the council chambers?
It's always a really popular event. Then we go to Scarecrow Row. We had 20 participants this year, and the judges, of course, Steve Byington was one of the judges this year, and it was just a great event for the community, and it was a hard act to follow from the years past as to picking the winners for 2018. Here are a few of the other pictures of some of the scarecrows that we had this year. Then, the same day, we had the Family Fall Festival, and the weather wasn't so good, but we still had a great crowd, and we were happy with the turnout, very happy with the turnout. So we look forward to next year and to see what it brings for 2019. The Johnny Appleseed Project for this year is now in progress. The deadline was Sunday, but we've extended that through this week. So we've had quite a few people that have participated in this program in years past with over 3,000 trees planted through this project. This year, the trees offered, or the project. This year, the trees offered are the Green Base Japanese Zelkova, the Ivory Silk Japanese Lilac, the Eastern Red Oak, which is a really popular tree that we've had almost every year, and then the Crimson King Norway Maple, which has a red leaf to it year-round, and the Princeton Elm, which is one of the Elms that we used in the Business District in the median strip. So the other thing I'd like to just talk a little bit about was the Schaefer Park Tennis Court Project. These are just a few pictures that we had from the beginning to the end. So you can see, you know, the construction that took place during the summer, and voila, here's the final product, which I think we're very happy with. We've had quite a few players already on the tennis court. We've had lots of comments about what a great court it is, especially with the people that have played tennis for a number of years. And the people also are very happy with the parking lot. So we're very happy that that project is now completed. Upcoming events, now we're going towards the holidays. The Candy Cane Hunt in Schaefer Park is on Saturday, December the 1st, from 1:30 to 2:45, and it's free and open to the public. Breakfast with Santa at the OCC is Saturday, December 8th, from 9 to 11:30 at the OCC. Tickets are now on sale at the community center. And then the last event of the year is lighting up of Oakwood in the Holiday of Lights, and that's Sunday, December the 9th, beginning at 6:30. And that's just a magical evening for the whole community. That's probably one of my favorites. So with that, that's the end of my program for tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much Carol. Does anybody in council have any questions for Carol? All right, well, as usual, you know, we appreciate all of your efforts making this a great place to live.
Thank you.
And, and I think, I look forward to the luminaries, and hopefully it won't be cold or wet. Cold's okay, wet's not okay.
Yeah, wet's not okay.
I agree.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a city manager report, Mr. Klops.
Well, Your Honor, I think I mentioned at our work session that I wasn't going to speak about anything, but some things came to mind, but I'll be very, very brief. You know, first, the tennis court project, you know, it may, it may seem rather simple to just, you know, bulldoze and remove an old court and build a new one, but I can tell you, there were a lot of moving parts to that project. Obviously, we're right in the middle of a neighborhood. You know, there was some complications along the way. The weather played a big factor, as you know, early on in the project. But as Carol said, you know, at the end of the day, we, we have a beautiful, beautiful new facility that is also the home of Oakwood High School tennis. And so the schools were a partner with us through the project, and I can remember about two years ago, we started talking about, you know, planning for this project and budgeting for it, and, you know, we, we looked at different concepts of, you know, three courts, four courts, five courts, even six courts, and we talked about the parking lot, and we, as you know, we shared the, the ideas with the budget committee, and, and Jay Weischer, our former assistant city manager, played a big role in that, along with Carol, of course, and, you know, that led to ultimately selecting this five-court design, which is really a wonderful fit with the schools, and, and positions them, you know, moving forward to have a beautiful tennis facility for the high school teams, again, right in the heart of our community, and I think the parking lot will really be appreciated by the community, you know, as more and more folks begin to use it, particularly during periods of inclement weather. So all in all, it's a great end product, and, and my thanks to Carol, and Brian Caldwell, and Tom Long. They were the three staff folks that, you know, met with the contractors, a whole bunch of them, every week, and really just shepherded this thing through to completion. Our leaf collection season is well underway. We're in our fourth week now, and we will go all the way until Friday, December 21st, picking up leaves throughout the community, and we do that on a two-week cycle. There's a note about it in the Oakwood Scene, and we'll put a press release out here later this week, just to remind people about the procedures. But what I've seen over the years is, you know, neighbor, new people moving in, they see what their neighbors do, they talk to their neighbors, and everybody figures it out. So typically, the first three or four weeks are slow, but as the weather starts to turn like this, then all of a sudden, they start to dump, and, and our Public Works Department will work hard, you know, getting all that cleaned up. I may have mentioned this at our last meeting, but East Drive will be repaved at the expense of Vectren next summer, when we do our annual mill and asphalt mill and overlay program, and this was something that Vectren agreed to do, given the, the scope of that major gas pipe installation on East Drive. So I don't know if the letter's gone out yet to the property owners, but everyone that lives on East Drive in Oakwood will get a letter from Vectren, personally notifying them of this, this complete repaving from curb to curb. So that's a, a nice gesture by Vectren. And then I'll just end my comments with a personal thank you to Jeff Schulman. I can just tell you from sitting in this same seat here with him, Your Honor, in your seat, you know, leading all those planning commission meetings, and, and as you mentioned earlier, there were quite a number of them that were really difficult to manage. You know, we, we have a community full of people that care about their neighborhoods, and, and as I've, I've kind of tongue-in-cheek somewhat said many times over the years, we all don't agree on everything. And so there are differing opinions, which really makes Oakwood unique and special, and, and when you're at the, on the planning commission, and in particular, the chair, you, you're in the hot seat to manage some real tough issues. So I just want to mention that, and we're going to miss Jeff Schulman a lot. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions or comments for our city manager? Hearing none, we'll, time for council comments. Councilmember Epley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've just won, I wanted to congratulate Carol Collins, Brian Caldwell, Tom Long, and others for the Schaefer Park Tennis Courts. I can't prove it, but I think I was the first player on it that, that Friday it opened. I was there with the tennis ladies at about 9:15.
Any aces?
And, and they're, they're really great to play on, and I, I drove by yesterday, you know, November 4th, it's, it's November, and all five courts were in use, so.
Wow.
So it's just a great asset to the community, so, thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Just real quick, I can't believe it's already November. I feel like it's August or September, which, I mean, November to me means that it's started the season, and I just want to remind people, I know everybody likes to go to malls, hit the big stores, shop online, but if you have a chance to go and shop at our retail locations on Far Hills or here on Park Avenue, at least give them a shot, especially if you've never been, and support our local businesses for the holidays, because I know they have a lot of good product to sell, and it'd be a, you know, it should be nice and close, you can't beat that. So just give them a look if you can, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Vice Mayor Byington?
I just wanted to, everybody knows tomorrow's election day, but I wanted to say, be kind to your poll workers. My, my beautiful wife is one of the volunteers who, who does that every year, or, yeah, just about every year, and those folks have a very tough job. They're really there to try to help you, so be nice to them as much as you can.
Great. Yes, I, I also wanted to comment on tomorrow being election day. Even I am just totally saturated with TV ads, but some of the ads are issue-oriented, and sometimes they're not. And what particularly disturbed me was, was two, two ads, one against the Republican named Foley, and another one against the Democrat named Foley, and they were not ads related to the issues. They were personal attacks on two fine community leaders, and it was uncalled for. And I would hope that while that stuff might work in Columbus, it doesn't, it doesn't wear well in Montgomery County. So if, if Mike and Dan Foley are listening to me tonight, you know, keep up the good work, and, and don't, and don't let the naysayers, you know, bring you down, or your family down. I also want to congratulate Carolyn Rice and, and Doug Barry, who are running for county commission, for running a totally issues-oriented campaign, and neither one of them chose to buy TV advertising. So you can't go wrong with either one of them. And then I would encourage you to vote yes for our City of Oakwood Property Tax Renewal Levy tomorrow, and I would encourage you to vote no on issue one. Anybody that has anything to do with community, public service in the state of Ohio, from legislatures to judges to healthcare people, are saying that that's bad law. It's, you shouldn't have a constitutional amendment to, to deal with the opioid addition. Let the legislature and the healthcare professionals deal with that. And then on, on a happier note, on Saturday, November 10, I'll be participating in the Veterans Memorial that the Girl Scouts in Oakwood are going to be, what's the word, dedicating, dedicating at Orchardly Park. And it's November 10th, but they're having the event at 11 minutes after 11 o'clock in celebration of the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. So I would encourage you to come out and, and celebrate something that all of us can agree upon. So with that, I would say, I can't say it the way you would say it, I'd just say, go ahead and vote. I can't say vote early and often, I just have to say vote. Okay, that was a, that was a joke, people. Okay, this meeting, this, our next meeting is going to be Monday, December 10th, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for watching.